Well, good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one Newburgh Planning Commission meeting to order, and let's start with the roll call, please.
Okay, Jason Dale.
Here.
Robert Sherry.
Here.
Charles Aben.
Here.
Gina Morris. Chris Wright.
Here.
Sharon Capri. Jeffrey Musall.
Here.
Thank you.
And thank you. This time, I'd like to ask if there are any public comments for items not on the agenda. If there's anyone in the waiting room would like to make a five-minute comment on anything that's not on our agenda this evening.
Mr. Chair, there's nobody in the waiting room.
No one in the waiting room? Oh, thank you.
Not at this point.
Okay. Well, we'll move on. We've got a a little mix of meetings this evening. I'd like to start by reopening the continued public hearing on the Newburgh Urban Renewal Plan and Accompanying Report Conformance, and also open a legislative hearing with regard to the new comprehensive plan and Yamhill County Comprehensive Plan Conform- and if there's anyone that wants to give testimony, we'll do so at a later time in the meeting. We'll give a chance for proponents to speak first, and then opponents, and then some rebuttal. And I'd like to go ahead and call for if there are any abstentions or conflicts of interest and objections to any jurisdictions with regard to these two meetings. Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and move on to the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So, Robin, if you would like to pull up the PowerPoint, please. We have with us tonight, again, Elaine Howard from Elaine Howard Consulting LLC. She has been our consultant of record as we've gone through this process. So, we're going to run you back through the PowerPoint that we did at the July eighth meeting. So Elaine's going to give you the Urban Renewal 101, then I will go through the projects. Elaine will talk about the impacts to the city and the plan duration, and then I will bring it to close, talking about conformance with the comprehensive plans of the city in Yamhill County. Next slide, please. Elaine, it's all yours.
Thank you, Doug. The role of the Planning Commission is to review the proposed Newburgh Urban Renewal Plan and make a determination on its conformance to the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and to the Yamhill County Comprehensive Plan. Next slide. First of all, we always like to remind people that urban renewal is not a new tax. It is a division of taxes from the taxing districts. It does not increase your personal real property tax bills. The money comes from the other taxing districts. Next slide. The way urban renewal works is off of property tax revenue that would otherwise go to regular taxing jurisdictions. At the time, an urban renewal area is established. The assessor establishes a frozen basis value that's shown in concept by the green arrow. All the property taxes off of that existing assessed value continue going to the regular taxing jurisdictions. Those property taxes go up for two reasons. They're allowed to go up in Oregon by a limited three percent annually, and they go up if substantial improvements or new construction happens on a property. Next slide. As an urban renewal area is formed in a city, that increase in assessed value on those property taxes just within the urban renewal area boundary will go to the urban renewal area itself instead of going to the other property taxing jurisdictions. So those taxing jurisdictions continue giving property taxes off of that base shown by the green. Any increase goes to the urban renewal area over the life of the urban renewal plan. Next slide. Ah-ha.
It worked tonight, Elaine.
Not too tired tonight. So the blue line does, arrow shows that increase in property tax revenue and the fact that it actually goes to the urban renewal agency. Sometimes there's confusion about is that the whole city or just the urban renewal area? That is only in the urban renewal area. It is not citywide. So all the rest of the property taxes flow the same way. The important thing to understand is schools and education service districts are a little different. Next slide. With schools and education service districts, they are funded through the state school fund. And Doug, is that on a couple of slides down? I forget.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. So this one is just kind of recapping what you were talking about.
Great. The other important thing that's different on this slide than what I've just said is that many times in an urban renewal area, that growth may not have occurred but for urban renewal, and that is because urban renewal is able to provide the infrastructure that's needed for new growth to happen. If your utility systems are capped out and you cannot add growth because of that, or there isn't a system in place to a property, urban renewal can help provide the funding to those systems to allow that growth to occur. Next slide. There we are. Schools are funded on a per pupil ratio. The, those schools are the local school district and the education service district. So for regular taxing districts, that impact is directly on them. Next slide. For schools, this is what a school funding scenario looks like. You can see at the bottom is the state school fund. The state school fund is comprised of a number of different sources. Local property tax revenues are one of those sources. If the legislature does not have enough money to fully fund schools, they have other sources that they can tap to fill that state school fund. So the per pupil amount that the Newburgh schools would get does not decrease by urban renewal coming into effect. And in addition, on our advisory group, we did have the school district superintendent, and he has reviewed the entire proposal and has heard me give this presentation. Next slide.
So here's where we'll do the transitions. I will take over. I guess I should remember to enter the entire staff report and all the exhibits and attachments into the record. So we've set the stage. We've talked about this before in presentations to you, and so the city has been engaged since, really, two thousand and fifteen, and then moving forward to two thousand and twenty-one with a variety of initiatives, which include our economic development strategy, our downtown plan, our transportation system plan. We've updated all of our functional plans, water, wastewater, stormwater. We've also done a community visioning program. We engaged in the urban renewal feasibility study starting in two thousand and nineteen. That got in front of council in two thousand and twenty. We've done the implementation in the Riverfront Master Plan, which is another item that took place in front of the city council in two thousand and nineteen. And then we had to update all of our functional plans because of the Riverfront Master Plan. And those activities have now been culminated, and so all the Riverfront work has been integrated into our transportation water, wastewater, and stormwater plans. As I've indicated before, the top graphic is the riverfront area, which is about four hundred and sixty acres. And you can see the different kind of development pattern that is anticipated. The center slide is the downtown area in the ten big ideas. And I've shared with the commission before, there are over a hundred and thirty urban renewal districts throughout the state of Oregon in both rural and urban environments. Next slide. So as Elaine alluded to, we had a citizens advisory committee. They met eight times in developing the plan and the report, the accompanying report that's before you this evening. We've done community engagement. Lacy DiGraff are, with the city, has been pushing things out on social media. We have a robust webpage. I've always encouraged people to go watch the videos. We have six videos up there. And we've done a variety of community presentations to different organizations. We've also briefed Planning Commission and council, and we kept the taxing districts informed as we were in process of preparing the plan and the report. Next slide. So here is the urban renewal district. The bottom of the screen on the graphic is the riverfront area, and the committee broke it into sub-areas for their analysis purposes. We have the connections of River Street and Blaine Street into the downtown area. Downtown is the blue at the north side. So that area encompasses about six hundred acres of land. The maximum indebtedness identified in the plan is a hundred and six point four million. That's over a thirty-year period. As Elaine had noted earlier, urban renewal does not increase property taxes. And so as we've given presentations, we reminded them, as Elaine had articulated earlier, of how the financing of urban renewal, the distribution of those funds occur. Next slide. So I'm quickly going to walk through the different areas. On the left is the mill site proper. In purple, it has transportation and infrastructure improvements on Wayne Nuski, the bluff road. There is a road east-west through the mill site, and this is not the specific location, but it's, there is a road in the mill site. And then the green is the esplanade. The esplanade is something that came out of the Riverfront Master Plan. On the right-hand side is SubArea B. That's south of the bypass and to the west of the mill site proper. So the green are the multimodal pass and the esplanade. And the yellow you see are roadway and infrastructure improvements, which also include a railroad crossing improvement. As development occurs, there will be, traffic volumes will increase, and they will require improvements with signal arms and bells and whistles and so forth at those crossings. Next slide. So here you see is on the left, this is north of the bypass, and this one is for wastewater infrastructure. And the primary component of this is a new pump station with a force main that would go off to the northeast, and then the other green lines are gravity that come in. It's also important to note that SubArea B, by and large, does flow into this new pump station. So think of Waterfront Street and then a line going underneath the bypass and then connecting up with the pump station. Area D is between the railroad tracks and River Street, and it includes an extension of Blaine Street from Ninth Street to College, improvements to College Street, and another railroad crossing improvement because of the rail line. Next slide. Area E is River Street, and you've heard me say before, there's a theme, River Street improvements essentially from Fourteenth Street all the way up to First Street. There's also underground infrastructure associated with that, and then F on the right-hand side is the continuation of River Street. Next slide. G is on the left, and this is on Blaine Street, and this is really waterline improvement. So a lot of the area that's in green, excluding the PGE substation and Memorial Park, is for high-density residential development. If you get that high density, there's waterline improvements that are necessary based on an evaluation that was done for the residential area south of the downtown. And then there's Area H, which is the downtown itself. So the brown line in the middle is the road diet from Coplet End to Coplet End. On the right-hand side is that last piece of River Street. The yellow line towards the bottom, the solid line, is that Second Street improvement, and that is underground and the overhead utility lines. The two circles in the middle on Blaine are for traffic signals. The other circle on Hancock at College is for a partial funding for intersection improvement. And then the blue lines are waterline improvements. And these water lines were strategically Brett Music, which is online, I believe, this evening. Looked at that for infill development, and because we have undersized water lines within the historic downtown area. The yellow shaded area is representing that somewhere within the downtown, there's funding identified for two new public parking lots. Next slide. And I'll turn it back over to Elaine.
Because of the way division of taxes works, there is an impact to the city of Newburgh as a result of the potential urban renewal plan. Urban renewal projects will be used to spur development, which will increase Newburgh's tax revenue in the future. However, over the thirty years, the city would forego a little under twenty-four million dollars. Again, a lot of that amount of money is dependent upon new growth that would not occur if this infrastructure is not put in. The impacts do not reduce existing revenues. It just impacts future revenues on increased growth. Urban renewal leverages the city's tax rate with other permanent rate taxes to create larger funding sources for project implementation. What that we can stay here, but what that means is the city, the city's tax rate is usually between twenty-five and thirty percent of the overall tax rate. So by creating an urban renewal area, you are able to get one hundred percent of the property tax revenues, permanent property tax revenues, instead of just that city's rate. Next slide. This just shows over the years, the impacts to the city of Newburgh. Now, urban renewal starts off slowly and increases each year by both at three percent expected growth and then by any potential new development to total that approximate twenty-four million dollars worth of impact. Next slide. There is a duration provision included in this urban renewal plan is not a required component by the statute, but it is a component that some of the taxing districts are interested in. The city willingly worked with them on putting that component into the plan. The duration provision says that the plan will not exceed thirty years and that the plan will be reviewed every five years with a required consult and confer process with the taxing districts so that they both know what projects are being undertaken and where the city is, the urban renewal agency, on the projections of that tax increment revenue, if they're on schedule for the amount over the thirty years or ahead of schedule or behind schedule. In addition to that, there is an annual report required for an urban renewal area that has to be transmitted to all of the taxing districts just to make sure they are informed of what the urban renewal area is doing and what projects will be happening in the future. Next slide.
This is where I'll pick it back up. So in your staff report tonight, we've done a full analysis as required by ORIS four fifty-seven for conformance of the urban renewal plan with the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan. So I'm not going to go all the detail on the multiple, multiple pages of findings that are in there, but those findings are both in your staff report and they are in the urban renewal plan, so when you look at Exhibits A and B. So these are the topics that we did look at for citizen involvement as an example, air, water, areas, natural hazards, open space, economy, housing, urban design, transportation, public facilities, and energy. And we concluded that their renewal plan and our analysis was in conformance with the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan. Next slide. We also looked at the subsets. So those are the transportation and wastewater, water, and stormwater. And those are subsets of the Comprehensive Plan, and as you've seen in the presentation, this particular program is for infrastructure for those four components. We also looked at our economic development strategy to ensure that the urban renewal program was in conformance. And in all cases, our conclusion was the yes, it is in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. Next slide. In addition, we had to look at the Yamhill County Comprehensive Plan. So that's also included in your report this evening. So with this one, we had to look at their categories of urban area development, alternative development, housing, economic development, commercial development, industrial development, and agricultural lands. Next slide. Along with water resources, open space, ecologically and scientifically significant natural areas, historic areas, sites, structures, and objects, transportation, and public facilities and services. Next slide. And finally, we looked at parks and recreation, the Willamette River Greenway, air, water, and land resources quality, and citizen involvement. In this case, we identified that the urban renewal plan was in conformance with the Yamhill Comprehensive Plan. There are a couple of minor changes that I'm going to bring up tonight, and that is at the conclusion of the Comprehensive Plan section under Yamhill County. We want to change the conclusion language, and it would read, based upon the above, excuse me, wrong page. Based upon the above findings, the request conforms with the goals and policies within the Yamhill Comprehensive Plan. Then, under the Transportation System Plan piece of it, we want to change the conclusionary statement for that one, that's, and it would say, based upon the above findings, the request conforms with the goals and objectives within the Yamhill County Transportation System Plan. And then finally, under the Grow Yamhill County, which is the county's economic development plan, that conclusion statement would be modified to read, based upon the above findings, the request conforms with Grow Yamhill County, Yamhill County Economic Development Plan. Next slide. So again, we looked at the TSP and the county's economic development plan because those are referenced in the county's Comprehensive Plan. Next slide. So here is our conclusion, so to speak. And so we're asking for the Planning Commission to consider a resolution, and that is twenty-one dash three seven three. In your packet this evening, if you have a printed copy, mine has page number seven on it. The staff recommendation is to move that the Planning Commission Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash three seven three, which the Newburgh Planning Commission finds based upon the information provided in the staff report and provided exhibits and attachments, that the Newburgh Renewal Plan conforms with the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and Yamhill County Comprehensive Plan. The Planning Commission further recommends that the Newburgh Urban Renewal Plan be adopted by the city council. And that will end our presentation, Mr. Chair.
Well, I thank you, Mr. Rux. At this time, I'd like to ask, is there any, anyone in the room that would like to offer public testimony? Proponent of the proposal? Or anyone that's in disagreement? Okay, then, hearing none, we'll move on. We already got our final comments from staff, and so let's look at deliberation by commission members. Any commissioners have comments or questions?
Any commissioner, right? Um. I know a property has been okay. Let me get my thoughts here. I was wondering if the if the application by Brian and Kelly Blair's for the city of Newburgh to include the urban reserve area is going to be involved in this?
No, it's a completely separate item, so.
Okay, this, so this is going to come in after the fact.
They're, they are two separate things. They are not related at all. So the Bellaires have submitted an application to the city and the county for an urban reserve expansion out over on the east side of town. That particular proposal will go to the Newburg, Newburgh Urban Area Management Commission. It will not come before the City Planning Commission.
Okay, that was my question. All right. All right, thank you. That was it.
Thank you. Any other commissioners, questions, comments, concerns? Well, not hearing any. We'll move on to any action by the Planning Commission. Do we have a motion, suggestion for motion?
Planning Commissioner Wright moves to adopt Planning Commission Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash three seven three with Exhibits A, Newburgh Urban Renewal Plan, Exhibit B, Urban Renewal Report, and Exhibit C, Findings. The Newburgh Urban Renewal Plan conforms with the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and the Yamhill County Comprehensive Plan. The Planning Commission further recommends the Newburgh earning Newburgh Urban Plan be adopted by the city council.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. And then can we get a vote, please?
Okay, Jason Dale.
Yes.
Robert Sherry.
Yeah, yes.
Charles Aben.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri. Come back to her. Jeffrey Musall.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry. I was on mute. I didn't realize that. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Six yeses.
And then the motion passes, so at this time, I'd like to go ahead and close our legislative hearing and move on to our next items, which is items from staff.
And staff has no items this evening.
No items is. Well, thank you, Doug. Items from commissioners. If you want to have anything to like to add or discuss.
Nope.
Nothing new.
Nothing new. Nothing new under the sun, as the saying goes.
I have a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
On the motion we just made, should we say anything about those three word changes?
Yes, probably. We do on all the other stuff, don't we, Doug?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and so in addition to that, the I didn't write them all down. The language changes.
You could simply say, Commissioner, is that under the Yamhill County Conclusion Statement, TSP Statement, and Economic Development Statement that they read as staff presented at the hearing?
Yeah. In addition to Resolution two thousand and twenty-one three seven three with Exhibits under TSP, Staff Recommendations as presented.
Well, thank you, and if there are no objections, then our vote can still stand, I take it?
It would be good to get a second and do another vote on that. Clarity purposes.
Good.
I'll second it.
Okay, then let's go ahead and vote.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Robert Sherry.
Yes.
Charles Aben.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jeffrey Musall.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, again, we have a passage. So moving on, we'd already determined staff had no extra comments. Anything else from commissioners at all? Oh, hearing none, I.
Oh, actually, I want to know. Sorry. Commissioner Wright, may I know further about the what's happening with the rental application for Fifth Street? Do we vote on that? Is the testimony now closed?
No, Commissioner, we actually can we not, we cannot talk about that. That is continued hearing, so that will come back to you in August.
Okay. Right, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Yep, and that's, that's, we get to look forward to the continuance of that in our next meeting, as Doug said. So with that, we'll call this meeting. So with that, we'll call this meeting short and sweet, and go ahead and I'll adjourn the July 22nd, 2021 meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission. Thank you all, and have a good evening.